Call me of the Board of Trustees of the Arlington City Council and the Arlington ISD School Board for October 25, 2012. I'd like to start by having the council members and board members introduce themselves, and we'll start with Ms. K. Part over there.
Thank you, Sherri K. Part, Arlington City Council, District 2.
Gloria Penya, Arlington ISD Board Member.
Robert Shepherd, Arlington City Council, District 6.
Jamie Solins, Board Member.
Charlie Parker, Arlington City Council, District 1.
Boobie Hogg, Vice President of the Board.
Robert Clark, Mayor of Arlington.
Peter Barron, President of the School Board.
Captain Wyman, Mayor Pro Tem, District 4.
Erin Rice, Secretary of the School Board.
Michael Glassby, Council Member, District 8.
Tony Palma, School Board.
Lana Wolf, Arlington City Council, District 5.
Robert Rivera, Arlington City Council, District 3.
Jimmy Bennett, Arlington City Council, District 7.
And to my left is Interim Superintendent Vasos, and to the mayor's right is City Manager Trey Yelverton. We have all discussion items tonight, quite a few items to go through, so we're going to go kind of quickly. We intend to be finished by 5:50 or 5:55 at the latest. First on the agenda is Ms. Powell, please. These are follow-up discussion items on existing and potential areas of collaboration between the city and school district. Ms. Powell.
President Barron, Mayor Clark, School Board Members, City Council Members, Dr. Vasos, Mr. Yelverton, good afternoon. I think we got everybody there. At our joint meeting in May, the Board and the Council identified a number of topics that they wanted to research to identify potential opportunities for collaboration or partnership between the school district and the city. Today, which you're going to hear are reports on 17 of those topics, and I'm pleased to report that in 15 of those 17 areas, there's some positive outcome, some opportunity for collaboration or partnership between the city and the school district. That collaboration made, it runs the range from simple sharing of information between the two entities to benefit both entities, to sharing resources and assets, all the way to potentially contracting for one service in particular. It was only in the areas of accounts payable and in electricity supply aggregation that we did not find a meaningful opportunity to partner between the two entities. So with that, we're going to have staff people come forward, give very, very brief reports, and certainly we can entertain any questions.
Good afternoon, I'm Tony Drollinger, Executive Director of Finance for the School District. My area looked at whether or not there would be a shared benefit with jointly contracting for accounts payable services. As you know, the city outsources the processing of accounts payable invoices, and the city at this time is averaging about 30,000 invoices per year. In contrast, the district runs an in-house accounts payable department, and we process at this time approximately 90,000 invoices per year. The cost per invoice, excuse me, the city of Arlington averages about $3.74 per invoice. Staff in each department reconcile their own vendor accounts, and their payroll supervisor manages the accounts payable contract. The primary benefit to the city with this contract is that city department personnel and vendors can access accounts payable information online, and it's digitized, it's digital images. In contrast, the district processes accounts payable invoices at about $3.59 average cost per invoice, and that does include a factor for overhead. The accounts payable department has personnel that actually reconciles all the vendor accounts, so we're not pushing that out to the different schools and departments. At this time, we don't feel like we have the capacity at those different schools and departments based on the types of things everybody buys, it's all the same. The vendor accounts, there's many different funding sources, and so it'd be very difficult for school secretaries to try to reconcile these accounts. If there's any questions?
Good afternoon, I'm Rebecca Rodriguez, Marketing Communications Manager for the City of Arlington. Well, the good news here is that our Departments of Communication have already long enjoyed a collaborative relationship. We share equipment, camera gear for television production has been shared between the city and AISD for years. We share access to programming, and we've also shared access to video and photography archives. In addition to television, however, both communication teams engage our residents and our stakeholders a number of ways, through social media, of course, through Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. AISD offers Achieving Excellence, the district's e-newsletter, which reaches more than 10,000 subscribers. AISD also has an automated phone system which reaches the parents of the district's more than 64,000 students. This year, City of Arlington's Office of Communication launched another outreach with myarlingtontx.com. That's a website which features content about Arlington and the city of Arlington, and we found that it's a unique way to let people know what's happening here. You'll find statistics in your packet, and you can look at some of the numbers there. We have found it to be an effective tool. For example, that was another way for us to collaborate this summer, beginning of the school year. We partnered with AISD to reach out and inform folks about West Nile virus, what was being done in their schools, and let them know how that was being managed there. As AISD made those materials available to the city, myarlingtontx.com was an effective and appropriate platform for distributing information about West Nile virus to residents with school-aged children. The city also then collaborated with AISD to make the West Nile virus information available through that e-newsletter, the website, Twitter, and Facebook. Another opportunity that the city has available is its shared databases. The city of Arlington distributes information to its neighborhood associations about items of community interest on a regular basis, and we've also recently used that as a way to let folks know about open houses at different AISD schools as well. The city's Parks and Recreation Department also has a database and distributes information to its users on a monthly basis there. Now, going forward, we see a way to sort of combine our resources further and make those databases available on an as-needed basis to AISD. AISD has a commitment to send out automated phone messages on behalf of the city during emergency situations as appropriate. Another collaborative commitment would be to actively market myarlingtontx.com to continue to, you know, provide content as appropriate, and we'd also seek ways to do collaborative news releases and news conferences to ensure the best uses of our resources. So if you all have any questions, be happy to entertain those now.
Thank you.
I'm Stephen Harvey, Assistant Superintendent, and I'm here to talk about the Cannon Print Shop. The AISD staff has evaluated the costs of the AISD print shop, looking at our personnel costs, our utility costs, our maintenance costs, and evaluated against the Cannon offering and discovered that the AISD costs are less than those that were offered to us by the Cannon Print Shop. So for the bulk of our work, it's really more in our benefit to keep it in-house. However, as you all know, the Cannon Print Shop is a great facility and does some wonderful work, and actually has some capabilities that we cannot do in-house, and so we're recommending that we look at ways to take advantage of that type of work that the print shop at the city can offer to us that we can't do in-house. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Good evening, I'm Don Krausen, the Fire Chief of the City of Arlington. I'm here to talk to you about a donation or a transfer of a fire engine to the school district fire academy program. We're pretty excited about it. It's a very nice vehicle because we take very good care of our trucks, but unfortunately, this vehicle has met the end of its emergency response service life, and we're going to transfer it to the school district. That's a proposal, council will vote on a resolution in November, the school board will vote on a resolution in December, and hopefully if that's approved, we'll transfer the vehicle over. For me, generally, a picture's worth a thousand words, so there's the picture of the vehicle right there behind you. It is a 1998 Freightliner with a 1,250-gallon-per-minute pump, a 750-gallon tank, and a Class A foam tank also. It's in very good shape. It'll be great for the kids, it'll be a wonderful learning tool that should last at least 10 years, I would believe, and it's an exciting opportunity for the kids in the fire program. Any questions?
Thank you. And I got to tell you that on behalf of the district, we sure appreciate everything that the fire department is doing to get our kids trained in the fire program. It's a fabulous program.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Wickman, Assistant Director of Management Resources with the city. I'm here to speak to you about the Eco Media Projects Partnership. This is a contract the city has held for several years with Eco Media, which is a division of CBS, and basically, as part of advertising projects that they do, they come to us with sponsorship opportunities for different projects in the city. Recently, they've added both an educational and a wellness element instead of just the environmentally friendly things that they were doing. We worked with AISD to get a list of projects which could be potential items for them to sponsor, give some money towards. Those are listed in your staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
My name's Jay Doge, and I'm City Attorney for the City of Arlington. Our assignment was to look at the feasibility of whether the city and the school district could use a common procurement for electric supply. The three components that we'd be most interested in, of course, is price, supply dependability, and budget stability. Arlington uses, procures its electricity through about 160-member electric aggregation entity made up mostly of cities but some others' special districts. The school district has most recently procured its next power supply contract through a bid process that it used individually, although it had been a member of a school district aggregation entity. We looked at the contracts, and of course, the price that you get for electricity is dependent largely on, the biggest component is for the price of natural gas and what it sells at any particular time in the market. Arlington's current contract is through the year 2017. The school district recently did a procurement that starts a new contract, a 24-month contract that begins on January 1 of 2013 and runs through 2015. So there's a mismatch in terms of the timing. If we would be inclined to do a common procurement, that could be done in 2015 when the school district contract comes to an end, and it certainly is eligible to participate through the TCAP aggregation entity if it so chooses. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Just out of curiosity, what is the cost per kilowatt hour with the organization that you buy and what we're actually paying now? Do you have those numbers?
You were all, yes, Arlington was, and TCAP was, bid Arlington's contract in 2009, so the price that was established at that time, the market price, was about $6.09 per kilowatt hour. You all were in the market just this past few months, and the price is now at 5.7. That price had declined from the time that TCAP did it. You all caught it, as it did not when you bottomed out, but it's on its way up now. So in 2015, when your contract expires, that will be, whatever the market price is, will establish that contract. So it's really the point at time that you're in the market is when the price is established.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gas, from Glassby, go ahead.
Mr. Doge. We have a question. Taken under consideration the size of the two entities, what, do you have a feel for any kind of impact or influence if we found the right time that we could join together, might have on negotiating an agreement?
I think that, and the reason that the cities formed an aggregation entity on their own was to do that very thing, to pool and be out in the market and felt that it had more clout, it could hire consultants that had the expertise to provide advantageous contracting provisions. And yes, I think that's definitely is an advantage if you are with a group that can pool their resources and exercise more market power.
And I guess is there some way that we can stay in close communication so that when we get to the point where we have the latitude to make some adjustments, we can have the best idea of who we might be able to get the right kind of price on?
Sure, sure, and that's what we said in the staff report, is that when the school district contract expires, it's eligible to participate, and I know TCAP has new members join all the time, and that's, the time at which they join is when the price is established, when their contract begins. So that's what I said in 20, actually, it'd be in about the late 2014 timeframe that would be the relevant time period.
Okay, I'm not bringing another fire truck. This is to, this is to talk about a formalized partnership between the city of Arlington and the school district for emergency management services. Historically, the school district and the city of Arlington has worked very well in an ad hoc sort of situation. We'd like to formalize that. We find ourselves working together quite often, be it a tornado, or a hailstorm, or a flood, or other type of emergency, even at a local school. We work very well together, but we'd like to do a little bit better. And I think what we intend to do is formalize an agreement where we'll furnish resources and personnel to each other in the event of an emergency. We'll agree to train together and work together on incidents in a more aggressive fashion with the hiring of James Smith. That's been a very good partnership for us and is helping us to make inroads into a better, stronger relationship. And lastly, we'll work more closely with you on public health emergencies and things of that nature. So it's a formalized relationship now. Any questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Cindy Powell, Associate Superintendent, and I'm going to give the next four reports. The first one is on energy management. We were asked to evaluate the possibility of sharing energy conservation efforts and/or cost. The AISD has a full-time energy manager and an energy specialist on staff. The city handles its energy conservation areas, or efforts rather, through three different departments, the Facility Services Department, Construction Management, and the City Attorney's Office. We have met, and we've looked at what opportunities we might have to do something together. The AISD staff does not have capacity to offer full-time energy management services to the city. We spent a great deal of time sharing information about initiatives that both entities undertake in regards to energy management. In particular, we talked about loan programs and grants that we have participated in recently that have allowed us to upgrade equipment. We talked about an energy conservation campaign that we ran last year among all of our schools and departments that was very successful. And we talked about bond programs and opportunities for financing equipment upgrades to help improve energy conservation and energy consumption rates. So what we found was, this was one of the areas where the benefit was truly the information that we shared, and we established good relationships here, and we'll continue to share that information. So, are there any questions on energy management? On fleet services, fleet services and fuels, the next topic we'll cover. We were asked to look at possible opportunities to jointly share fleet maintenance services and to procure fuel jointly, and to possibly also share fueling sites. So there are three parts here. In regards to the fleet maintenance, the city outsources its fleet maintenance. The school district maintains its fleet with in-house staff. The city has a contract in place for fleet maintenance that expires in fall of 2015, and that particular contract does not have any provision that would allow Arlington ISD to access services through that contract. So at the moment, that does not appear to be a good viable option for us. Terms of fuel, the common fuel type that we both procure and store on-site is diesel fuel. We have explored the possibility of sharing bid pricing on that. The school district recently issued a new bid for diesel fuel purchases, and our price differential is much lower, or somewhat lower, than the city's. And so there is a provision within our current bid for other entities to purchase off of that bid through an inter-local agreement. And so the city, if it chooses to do so, can access our bid pricing on diesel fuel. I believe the city's current contract for diesel fuel expires in February, and so the city's going to look to see how our new vendor performs on this particular commodity, and then make a decision as they approach February as to whether the city wants to do a bid itself and see how its pricing looks, or if the city may want to purchase through our bid. In terms of sharing fuel sites, we had a lot of conversation about this, and what we've determined is that on a day-to-day, routine, ongoing basis, this does not appear to be a real good option for us for several reasons. Certainly, in emergency situations, yes, we can share each other's fuel sites. One thing that we determined very quickly is that both the city and district staff needs to fuel at approximately the same time, usually in the morning or in the afternoon, and so there was some concern that we would create some congestion at our dispensers at those times, which frankly, also creates an increased risk for accidents if you've got more vehicles close together. So there was an efficiency element there, and then also a risk factor that did not make that very attractive. And also, the city has to pay a fuel tax that the school district is exempt from. And so for any diesel fuel that the city would take from our site, we would have to track that, collect that tax, and then remit it to the state. So that would create yet an additional administrative function that doesn't exist with us right now. So we, again, we determined that on a routine basis, that doesn't appear to be a very efficient option for either entity, but certainly, in the long run, on emergency situations, yes, we can share fueling sites. Any questions on that?
Natural gas-type vehicles, and what you are planning to do about the procurement of those fuels?
We have been procuring propane buses for the last three years, and this is part of our bond program, and it's a replacement program, replacing older buses, so we are not buying diesel buses now, we are buying propane buses. So the fuel that we have on-site, we store diesel and we store propane, so we're not looking at CNG at the moment.
I just had one question on the tax that the city has to pay that the district is exempt from, that's a Texas Administrative Code regulation?
Yeah, it's a diesel, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name of it, it is a diesel fuel fleet tax, but specifically municipalities have to pay that, and school districts are exempt from that. And so we don't pay it when we get our fuel delivery, and so if the city were to come to our site to fuel some of its vehicles, they would still be liable for that tax, so we would have to collect it and remit it.
Okay, something for city advocacy to work on and get that changed. Thanks.
All right, the next thing we want to talk about is food service preparation for the jail. The question was asked, could the AISD Food Service Department prep the meals for jail inmates? The city currently outsources food preparation for the jail, and the city, I believe, initially outsourced that contract to a vendor in Fort Worth, and the contract expires in May of next spring. An out-of-state company has bought that local vendor, and that new company has expressed, I think on several occasions, that it is very unlikely that they will be able to offer pricing on the next bid at the same level that they are paying or offering now. So the city is enjoying, I think, some very good pricing on this particular contract at the moment. We have actually met, we have taken samples of the food items that are served at the jail, and used that to guide us in our pricing, and we have determined that, yes, we can provide that service if the city would like to do so. The prices that we have identified at this point frankly are a tick higher than what you're paying right now, but again, your current vendor is expressing that it's very unlikely that they'll be able to offer pricing at the same level again when the current contract expires. So next spring, the city will bid out this contract. AISD will be invited to bid on the service, and then the city can evaluate all of its bids and select the contract that represents the best value for the city.
Ms. Powell, does the district have the capacity to provide that service?
Yes, we'll do it really through our catering function, but yes, we have looked at that, and we can. All right, the last topic that I'm going to cover, I'm sorry.
Just one moment, Cindy, I realize you've got the capacity, but tell me what you do on holidays and summer and weekends?
Well, we have factored that in, and our warehouse staff and the folks that would be delivering typically, they work 12-month contracts anyway, so certainly, they are off several days at Christmas, a couple of days at spring break, we would have to have staff work those days, and that's all been factored in here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the last topic I'm going to cover is grounds maintenance. We discussed the possibility of, or the potential benefit of jointly procuring contracted mowing services, that was the particular focus here. The city outsources all of its mowing needs with the exception of municipal golf courses and athletic fields. The school district does all of its mowing in-house. Prior to last year, we actually had a combination. We had, we did some contracted mowing, and we did some of the mowing in-house. And in an effort to reduce our budget, we cut those contracts, brought all the mowing in-house, and what we have found is, we were able to do it in-house with our existing staff, but the service levels are not what they had been before. The mowing cycles have really extended a bit with us maintaining all of these sites ourselves. We had some conversations about contracted mowing. Right now, the city's existing mowing contracts, the city has several, they extend out through fall of 2013, and there's only one of the city contracts that currently has an inter-local provision that would allow the school district to procure services through the contract. So certainly for this year, our opportunity is pretty limited. This is something we want to explore again in the future. One of the benefits that we do think that we can recognize even now has to do with our tax foreclosure properties. Our staff spends a day or so each month maintaining those, and we believe that we can procure the mowing services for those small properties as we need to, through the city's contracted mowing service, to help us maintain those properties and then allow our maintenance staff, our ground staff, to focus more on our schools and athletic facilities and administrative offices to be more efficient. So, any questions?
By any chance do a cost comparison on, I don't know, per square foot or whatever in terms of what the city pays through outsourcing and what we pay through in-house?
And we did. The city has provided me with their acreage and the pricing on their mowing contracts in total, and I've looked at that, and I did it on a per-acre basis, an annual cost per acre, and our costs are within about $85,000. our costs are within about $85 of each other per acre. Ours is a little cheaper, but then our service is probably not at the level that the city is getting right now. We are not able to mow as frequently as the city is with their current contracts.
Thank you.
If it's a foreclosure for you, it's a foreclosure for us?
It is.
And so you guys take the lead because you will be owed more than we will?
Well, typically with the struck-off properties, more often than not, they are struck off to us, I think, more so than, more frequently than to the city. And typically, yes, because we would have the bigger levy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry. I was wondering if there's discussions along the lines of combining forces together to look at contracting for potential outsourcing in the future to bring that overall cost even lower for both entities?
We can't, one of the things that we talked about and that is something we want to explore again next year even, one of the things that we tried to focus on were those sites where we've got a school next to a city property. And what we found was that it's, we really are being told by vendors that you're not going to recognize much of a benefit there because the contractor has to spend the same man-hours mowing, let's say the city park and the school district, whether they're under one contract or two separate contracts. So for that one particular element, we don't believe that there would be any significant savings. Certainly bundling up, you know, volume, we may recognize a benefit. Again, though, the city's under contract until next fall, so this is something that we will have to have some additional conversation about.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the joint purchasing initiative. And you know, for business office people, there's not a whole lot of things that excite us, but purchasing is one of those things. So we were really happy to meet with the city staff on this and that's because that's probably the area that we could most immediately gain some efficiencies and we recognize that. And back in 2009, the city council and the school board signed an inter-local agreement so that we could jointly procure goods and services. Immediately upon visiting with the staffs, we decided to trade vendor lists so that we could try to analyze those and see what vendors we both use to see if we could immediately gain some efficiencies there. And we also placed links to each other's websites on the purchasing departments of each entity. So a vendor that's on the city's website can just immediately click over and link to the district's website and see what purchasing opportunities are there and vice versa. So that was a good thing. We did identify immediately several things. Diesel fuel and mowing were already discussed by Ms. Powell. We discussed the milk and juice bid and we, on the next bid cycle, we decided that the district bids that first. We will go ahead and add that inter-local language in there to see if the city then can piggyback off of that bid. Likewise, bus washing, we bid that jointly in the fall of 2012. The city currently outsources that, so the city washes their vehicles in a local car wash. We wash ours in-house, but our facility's getting pretty iffy. So we were looking for an opportunity to possibly outsource that as well, so that was a good thing as well. Awards and promotional items, we awarded that bid on September 6th of this year. We did include the cooperative purchasing language in there. We provided that list of vendors to the city staff and they are going to be able to use that if it's more advantageous depending on what they're purchasing. Armored car service, the city and the district currently uses the same vendor, which is Trinity Armored. And the Trinity Armored was not interested in allowing inter-local purchasing because the district is so different. We have daily pickups at every location and the Trinity Armored had to add staff to accompany us or to service our bid. And so there was no gain for them to jointly go pick up the city because they also already had that business, so we couldn't do that. But the best thing I think that came out of this is we decided that we would meet quarterly, the two staffs, and continue to investigate opportunities. So it's good.
In the city, we recently embarked upon a registration process for vendors that have done business with the city in an effort to particularly notify those local businesses. Is that something that you guys do? Did you talk about our communication efforts to the community?
We didn't necessarily talk about that angle for local vendors. We currently post our bids, all of our bids on our website. We also advertise those in the paper, so local vendors obviously have the opportunity to look at that. We also send out to vendors that we know about or that are on our vendor list or that have indicated an interest, we actually send our bids to them. And I think we were hoping also to get some exposure from putting our link on your website.
We've had a lot of success kind of expanding our population of people that we contact through this portal that we set up, so I'd encourage you guys to talk more about perhaps collaborating that way.
Very good, thank you.
I'm Carrie Siegfried and I'm Director of Libraries for the City. So not surprisingly, I'm here to talk about library resource sharing initiatives. As your staff report on this topic indicates, our current Library Link Program offers Arlington Public Library materials to seven AISD elementary schools so that families can use school libraries together. The service includes collections of adult materials that are shelved there at the school library as well as weekly courier service to deliver materials from our public library collection to the schools in response to holds that are placed by teachers, by parents or by students. In fiscal year 2012, almost 4,000 items were loaned through this program to AISD elementary schools. We hope that by expanding cooperative library initiatives, more families will have easy access to library materials. In response to that need, we're really pleased that through AISD's recently awarded Texas Literacy Initiative's grant, we're going to be able to provide courier service to the 32 schools that are participating in that grant. So that will include elementary schools, junior highs, and high schools as well. We've just finished meeting with the AISD librarians in all of those locations and hope to be able to begin the service within the next few weeks. All AISD students right now have easy access to Arlington Public Library books through their student IDs. All of that data is loaded into our Arlington Public Library circulation system. So we really hope that this will be relatively barrier-free access to library materials. In order to make the most effective use of our school library and our public library collections, staff from both AISD and our public library staff have been getting together to compare collection data as well as library usage data to be able to look towards the future to try to make use of those precious collection development dollars as effectively as we possibly can. So where possible, we're not duplicating services and we're trying to balance one another out. I just finished reviewing some research the other day that indicates that a very important predictor of school success is access to quality print material. We know that some families are able to provide books and library materials to their children at home, but we know that not all families are able to do that. So that we hope by sharing library resources, we can get books in the hands of all of our children, not only to improve school performance, but also to inspire that love of reading and books in all of our children. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Venables, Community Development and Planning. Our task was to evaluate whether or not there could be some aggregation of mineral management activities between the Arlington Elementary School District and the city. We took a look at the level of services that the city of Arlington provides with its own in-house resources, compared those to what the school district does right now with contracted services and found they're very similar tasks. We looked at whether or not we could absorb those tasks. Right now, we lack the sufficient resource capacity to do that, but in the process of looking at the two, we found there were two significant opportunities, one of which was our mapping capabilities. The school district could benefit from those greatly. We have a very robust GIS system. What we've done is we've layered in the school district's property into our GIS system. When we generate a map that shows current drilling units and planned drilling of wells, it enables the school district to take a geographic look, if you will, to determine where your properties are in relationship to those drilling units, to see if there are some that are outside the drilling unit boundaries, are they inside the drilling unit boundaries, and then again, go look and find out if that property's under lease, if it is, where is it at in the process? The next thing we looked at was our record keeping. We pull down from the Railroad Commission on a regular basis production records and compare that to what is shown on our royalty statements on a monthly basis. Taking those production records and they're aggregated by well and being able to transfer that information over to the school district also provides a benefit because it turns out that a lot of the school district properties are in the same wells that the city has in terms of production. So having those records available for them to, again, compare against what your royalty statements are, the school district's royalty statements are, is a benefit. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Amy Kossas, Director of Communications for the Arlington School District. What we're going to be talking about this evening is psychographic study. The Arlington School District Board of Trustees asked AISD staff to evaluate whether the AISD could leverage its partnership with the city to conduct a joint psychographic study. A psychographic study goes beyond basic demographic data to examine the personalities, values, attitudes, interests, and lifestyles of individuals. The city of Arlington had previously had a study and provided the AISD with a copy of the psychographic study it recently obtained from the firm. AISD has reviewed the study and determined that the data will meet AISD's anticipated needs at this time.
Questions?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lance McCutcheon. I'm the Director of Network Services for the Arlington Independent School District. Over the past several years, the city has installed a citywide fiber infrastructure. We were asked to determine the feasibility and possibility of benefit for the city sharing the fiber installation with the AISD. Through a series of meetings, we determined there are several factors to be considered. The major factors are outlined in the staff report in the packet. Couple I may point out to you real quick is that the fiber infrastructure is down major thoroughfares in the city and many of our schools are buried back in neighborhoods. So there would be costs associated with those. In addition to that, as a public school district, we receive very favorable lease line rates. So a couple of things for us to consider in that. With that said, we've identified three AISD locations that are possible pilot sites for the AISD to use city fiber. We are currently gathering cost estimates for that fiber installation for these three locations and once we've received all this information, we will compare that against the lease line cost and at that point, hopefully help determine the feasibility of sharing fiber. Okay? Any questions?
That's good, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Rick Tice, Arlington ISD Personnel Services Director. I'm here to talk about volunteer services coordination. We're looking at, the objectives of this would be to eliminate duplication of effort for both volunteers and city and district staff and to save resources, meaning funds and labor. The challenges that we have are compatible systems. The district operates with a component of a larger software system. Which one should I use? Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me? Okay. And the city uses a standalone software system. It's a package system developed directly for volunteer tracking. And so the other things that we have to deal with are criminal history checks. We run through two different vendors. We run it through the DPS Secured Site, which costs us a dollar. The city runs it through the DPS Non-Secured Site, which costs them $2. We run about 15,000 volunteers a year, whereas the city runs about 5,000. Some of the intangible things that we're looking at is we just switched to an automated system two years ago with the budget cuts. It's running real well. We've gotten our volunteers used to it. This is the second year we've done it, so if we go to another process, we'd have to run them through that and hopefully not have too many people that are disappointed with that. But that's going smoothly now. Some of the solutions, the quick solution would be to utilize what the city of Arlington is utilizing and that's the Volunteer Squared Program that I spoke of because that's a standalone program built specifically for volunteer tracking and application. We would have to look at data sharing there. Unfortunately, then, we would have to go to the DPS Non-Secured Site where we would pay another dollar per person. And on the surface, that would be another $15,000 expense to the district. So looking at the fact that we have 15,000 volunteers, the city has 5,000, at this time, we don't know what percentage are duplicate volunteers. I'm sure that's pretty high. So there still may be some savings and it may be worth going ahead and pursuing it a little bit further to see if there's other savings. For the city to basically access the DPS Secured Website that we have would take legislative action and I don't know how long that would take. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the staffs for keeping it short and sweet and we appreciate it. We do have a couple of discussion items. One is to discuss the AISD/City Council Joint Committee. If there are, I'll give you one minute, one minute to make your case if anybody is interested in doing this. Dr. Reich?
Hi, I will talk because I was the one that brought this up at our last meeting. In efforts to try to move our two governing bodies forward in between these formal or semi-formal affairs, maybe the formation of a subcommittee of this committee as a whole might be something to consider. If there's no will for that, I'd like for us to come up with something where we can talk in between these meetings without having to schedule formal meetings so that we can just progress a little bit further. My intent, as I think all of ours are, this has been very fruitful, but to not have this just as a PR show that we're combining forces, I think we all want to move collaboratively, aggressively forward, so that's why it's on the agenda.
You know, I think your suggestion perhaps is a good one. However, I couldn't support that. I think that if we're going to meet and make decisions or try to make decisions, it's going to take all of us to do that. If we need to do it more frequently, we can, but even with a smaller group, you're still going to have to pay attention to the open meetings. So my for one would not support that.
Oh, I for two don't support it either. I'm just waiting for other board members to weigh in here. Mrs. Pena?
I think we all have enough committees that we have to attend meetings and, as you said, Mayor, it takes all of us to make the decision for our group. So I wouldn't be in favor of it either.
I do wholeheartedly encourage the staffs to stay in contact with their counterparts across the board.
That's who did all the work this time. We just told them what to do and they came back and fed it to us. So that's good.
Okay, now what I'd like to do is like we did last time, for a couple of minutes, go around the room. If we have suggestions for future agenda items, now's the time. Robert?
Thank you.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I visited with several folks about, you know, us coming together, and some friends of mine from California let me know about the great city of Pasadena, which has given us the, the awesome gift of the Levitt Pavilion, and so I thought that was worth listening to. So in their city, they have a joint program which is a, an attendance improvement, truancy reduction program. So it's a collaboration between the city and the school district, and evidently it's performing well, where it's a collaboration between making sure that kids stay in school, it's a collaboration between their city attorney's office, the city prosecutor, and the administration on the school district side. I don't know all the ins and outs of the details, other than it seems to be working there in their community, and so that's something I think maybe we can consider for future consideration.
Commissioner Andy Nguyen and his constables are working on something like that, and it would be mutually beneficial to bring them into the fold as well, so that we can all, all three as entities collaborate on something very good for our community.
Arlington Tomorrow Foundation, we had an issue come up that, that we wanted to bring forward to this group for perhaps future consideration. I might ask Mr. Yelverton to chime in here just a little bit, but some joint use agreements, whether it's playgrounds or things like that, as the, as the foundation looks to make gifts to the community. There are times where we've got facilities that could potentially both benefit, but we might need some clarity. So we need to, I, I'd suggest that to be something we talk about. Mr. Yelverton, Yelverton, add anything to that, or Ms. Wolf?
I suggest we just put it on the agenda and talk about it after it's posted.
No, I, I agree. I just don't, if there was any other information that might be helpful? Okay, great. Ms. Capehart?
Assuming there's going to be another meeting, one of the things that, you know, I think most of our focus at this, these two meetings that we've had have been on trying to find cost sharing and that kind of thing. Moving out of that realm and into the realm of the overall health and benefit of the community is something, if we're going to have follow-up meetings, I'd like for us to participate in. And Mayor, you know, I was there at the hospital this morning for that Community Health Council, and some of the discussion we had was somewhat startling, and it came out of AISD, and it had to do with the number of children who are now being referred into drug intervention in the elementary schools. That's, that's a community issue, and that one that maybe these two elected bodies could jointly try to tackle. It was very disturbing information. The other thing that, on a totally different plane, is that when there is zoning that is coming forward to the council or requested, that possibly we need to have more interaction from all of our school districts. I don't think in the past, we've had a cursory response from the school districts, but I don't think we've had real buy-in from that.
Why don't you split that on the agenda? Both of those items.
Yeah, and so I'm just thinking for if we have future meetings, Mayor, maybe take it out of the cost sharing and more, more into the direct community health.
This would be more in regard to, and possibly I should have asked the chief about it, as we're moving forward considering the reverse 911, I would wonder if the school would have any advantage or if it, if there would be any way for them to use that service?
Okay.
And as we put it on the agenda to?
Yeah, let's just put it on. Just back there, they're trying to line it up.
You got it? Okay. Just to follow up on what Ms. Capehart was talking about, one of the things that I hear when I visit schools, especially the elementaries, to some degree the junior highs, is, is the need for that social work type intervention, and so that, to address those types of issues, drug use among many other issues that children, especially from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, experience, and?
Mr. Parker? We're not discussing, we're just adding items to the agenda.
So just maybe beyond drug intervention, but more social service type efforts for the younger schools? Is that clear enough?
Yep.
Working? I would tag on to that overall health and fitness. I think we're covering the broad gamut that way.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir. We've started a, a kind of a recognition program for elementary students in Rockmore Elementary. Because it's one of the most challenged schools, essentially, we've gone to the apartment managers and requested that if those certain students could be recognized in academic citizenship or attendance, that they could be, have some rent removed from their monthly bills.
Okay, so what do you want to put on the agenda?
And I would like to find out if, if this is successful down the road, if we would consider implementing this on a greater scale.
Okay, we'll put them.
Just thinking along the line, keep our eyes open for what's going on in other school district, city partnerships, so that we could bring those, any best practices we could bring in to discuss whether?
Okay.
Thank you so much, everybody. Where are you going to be adjourned? I appreciate the staff work. Good job.